For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of February 17, 2020. Call the order please.
Hess?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Noack?
Here.
And Walagora?
Here.
Please raise up for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, modifications to the agenda this evening. I would suggest that we remove the recess number 15 and change the workshop into old business, just to stay into regular session until the second recess.
So we'll put in unfinished business?
Unfinished business, old business.
Okay.
Same thing.
Can we put old unfinished business?
Old unfinished business. Cindy made the motion. And I give you a second.
Okay.
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
And Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Any other modifications? Okay, approval of the minutes for regular session of February 3, 2020. Any issues, changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time you'll be allowed to address your concerns with the exception of medical marijuana. We'll wait until we get to old business, unfinished business, and allow for some concerns at that point. But if you have any other topics you'd like to discuss, there's a five-minute minimum. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. The consent agenda this evening is A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $412,081.34, and B is the 2019 annual monitoring reports. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
And Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We have some presentations this evening. First, we'll start with the Imagine Math accomplishments for Samuel Susek. I have a short one, and then I have Jennifer Caleri is with us today on behalf of the governor. Mine basically is-
You mean Samuel Fitzpatrick?
Samuel Fitzpatrick, what did I say?
Susek.
Susek. Yeah, we have a Susek coming up later, I'm sorry. Sorry, Sam, I owe you one. Yeah, they're close. I owe you one. It's Sam Fitzpatrick. And mine is, in recognition of your accomplishments and dedication to the Imagine Math program, as a top-rated student in the program for the State of Michigan, you have cast a positive light on yourself, the Alpena Public School System, and the City of Alpena. Congratulations and thank you. And then I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Mine is on behalf of the State of Michigan, and it's a special tribute to Sam. Let it be known that the State of Michigan takes great pleasure in honoring Samuel Fitzpatrick upon being ranked first of all Michigan students in the Imagine Math program. This distinguished tribute is presented to Samuel because of his dedication to the program and his willingness to succeed. Imagine Math is a personalized supplemental online math program for students in grades three through 12 that allows students to work at their own place. Samuel, a third-grade student in Mrs. Dunn's class at Vessar Elementary, recently claimed the top spot in the State of Michigan for lessons passed in Imagine Math. Samuel, a straight-A student, has taken the coursework as a challenge, completing more assignments and earning more points than anyone else, being only driven by his own will to achieve. He is simply interested in going above and beyond for his academics. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to Samuel Fitzpatrick for his commitment to excellence in academics. We wish him much success in all his future endeavors from State Rep Sue Aller, State Senator Jim Stannis, Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist, and Governor Gretchen Webber.
Next presentation, we have a donation from the Alpena Area Convention and Visitors Bureau for the efforts to repair the damage caused by the recent shoreline erosion. That is here.
Hello. A handful of years ago, the Alpena Area Convention and Visitors Bureau and the City of Alpena helped develop a brand identity with some other key stakeholders from the community for the area. This identity, Alpena as the sanctuary of the Great Lakes, focuses and highlights our authentic natural beauty and the experiences to be had in our community. Following this messaging, we have enjoyed growth in the local tourism industry, helping local restaurants, retail shops, and attractions capture important revenue. Recent weather fluctuations have begun to threaten our shoreline along Lake Huron, one of our most important tourism and quality-of-life assets. Tonight, the Alpena Area Convention and Visitors Bureau would like to present a donation of $5,000 to be used towards shoreline restoration efforts caused by this weather, these weather incidents. We have a very normal-sized check to give. Joining me is Julie Allen, one of our Alpena Area CVB Board of Directors.
All right, and next up, our life-saving commendations. Our chief, Forbus, is going to come up.
Good evening. As you know, on February 8, a house fire occurred on La Forest Street. Fire crews were on scene in under four minutes and went to work to save the elderly couple inside. Even before fire trucks arrived, off-duty fire captain Andy Marso and responding police officer Lincoln Susek went through the back door and attempted to enter the kitchen but were repeatedly pushed back by the extreme heat and dense black smoke. As soon as on-duty firefighters arrived, firefighter Rob Hamilton entered with a brand-new airpack and protective gear and grabbed the victim, passing her out to Marso, Susek, and Captain Harold Knott. As the fire crew continued to work, Officer Susek drove an AFD ambulance while Marso treated the patient en route to the hospital. Hamilton went back for the other victim, but tragically, he died on the scene. We offer our sincere condolences to the family, but tonight, we'd like to recognize the efforts of these professionals and the other three firefighters who were on scene and played a role in her rescue. Ironically, firefighter paramedic Hamilton is leaving us for a position with the Traverse City Fire Department. I'd like to thank and welcome Chief Jim Tuller, who drove all the way over to join us for this ceremony and support his new firefighter. Jim? Out there somewhere? There you are. Back it up, see ya. Yes, in the back row. I'd also like to ask Mayor Matt Walagora and Chief of Police Joel Jett to join me as we present three departmental life-saving commendations and three commendations for exceptional fire-ground action leading to the saving of a life. Absolutely everything we do in the fire service revolves around teamwork. Nothing is ever accomplished by one person, but almost anything can be with teamwork, the kind of teamwork that is trained on, practiced, fine-tuned, and carefully executed. A successful rescue is certainly such an effort. Firefighters, when I call your name, please come forward to receive your commendation. Then please line up on the stage. With commendations for life-saving, for showing great skill, determination, bravery, and heroism, would Officer Lincoln Susek, firefighter Rob Hamilton, and Captain Andy Marso please come forward? Chief Jett usually brings levity to the situation. He has the best jokes, but he has laryngitis tonight, so he's just going to wave and see why.
Look pretty.
Yeah, and look pretty. Mayor, would you come forward, please? The life-saving commendation is the highest award given by either the police or fire department. We're very, very proud to give these gentlemen these commendations this evening. And Mayor, if you'd hand them their plaque. Police Officer Lincoln Susek? In the middle?
I'm sorry.
Firefighter paramedic Rob Hamilton? And Captain Andy Marso. Congratulations. What we'd like to do, we've done in groups of three for photographic purposes. Media folks?
Nope, this is fine.
Well, there's three more. Yeah, there's three more after this. So do we want to do all six together?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. If you just slide down. Three other firefighters worked hard to keep the fire at bay, prepare for their second rescue, and played key roles in making the rescue possible. They are Captain Harold Knott, Lieutenant Brett Miller, and firefighter Dan Hibner. These men will receive commendations for their exceptional fire-ground action in support of the operation. Gentlemen? Captain Knott?
I'll look up and make sure you're in order this time.
Yeah, I got it covered this time. And firefighter Hibner. Congratulations. You want to have three in three?
Bill, are you okay?
Should I stand in the back, too?
They know you too well.
You owe me one for this guy. Good firefighter.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
It should be noted that four other firefighter paramedics were on duty Saturday, but were on other emergency calls at the time of the fire. Firefighter paramedics, and please stand if you're here, Jeff King, Dean Rivard, Todd Adrian, and Tyler Susek were trained, practiced, and ready, but their chance to save a life will come another day. I'd like to recognize them for their readiness and professionalism. And lastly, Mayor Walagora, would you like to say a few words?
Always. The mic is on. Really nothing more than you guys know my feelings on what you do. You do something every single day when you get up that I don't think of whatever do. So we're truly blessed in the City of Alpena to have such an amazing team and a great chief. And congratulations to Traverse City for getting a great firefighter from us. But thank you so much. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir.
So we have nothing under anything until we get down to unfinished business.
We have an announcement.
Did I miss the announcement? Oh, I had it marked off already. Okay, yeah, big announcement. There's a meeting of the Alpena County Intergovernmental Council that will take place on Thursday, February 20, 2020, at 7:00 PM at the Alpena County Regional Airport. The topic at that meeting will be medical and recreational marijuana that's open to the public, and it'll be at our cool new regional airport terminal. So everyone's welcome, and thank you for pointing out that I left that off my list. All right, so now, if I'm not correct, we're down to unfinished business, medical marijuana facilities. Adam Paul is going to kick us off, let us know where we're at.
Well, this is, I think, our fifth session that we've done over this. So what I've done is prepared a summary of where we're at with the certain, or at least where I interpreted where we're at, and we certainly can go over that regarding different categories. First of which would be zoning. We've discussed at length particular zoning districts where provisioning centers would be allowed. There have been other discussions regarding other facilities, but I believe the general consensus has been to follow Planning Commission recommendations, and I can go over those for anybody if you need to. But right now, we're concerning provisioning centers. As I understand it, we were allowing them in the I-2, industrial 2, industrial 1, business 3, business 2, office service district, and commercial corridor district, which does not, and that does not include the central business district. So with that intro, I'll let you guys jump in.
For clarification, there's no difference between the central business district and the DDA? Is it the same thing?
Correct. In this case, I call it central business district only because if there is any variation that, I know my zoning map is what everything else is based on, and the DDA has different limits. There is some DDA, for instance, in the waterfront development district. Noack, for instance, is in the WD district, so, but there's really not a whole lot of WD out there.
Okay. So, yeah, and what I wanted to do this evening is, I mentioned in an earlier email to council, is to at least start voting on the parts of the final ordinance that we're ready to make a commitment on. That way, Adam and Bill can start the process of getting the ordinance written. And then if there's something, if there's some part of it, especially perhaps the selection process, that we're not ready to vote on this evening, we'll at least gotten some of that other stuff out. Not only does that keep us moving forward, staff can get started, and the rest of our residents can kind of know where we're at and where we're going. Does that sound reasonable?
Sure. Reasonable. The only question I have, and the question for you, Bill, is with voting on this, since we're bringing this back into ordinance, is it necessary to vote, or should we vote on something like this? And since we're offering direction when we give a direction on other things?
Yeah, I think it was the intent as we went along here that at some point in time you'd vote and tell us what you wanted to do, and then we would draft the ordinance and have it for approval. So it's kind of hard to draft without knowing exactly what you want, so.
For public clarification, this is not voting to enable an ordinance. Now, the ordinance has not been drafted, this is giving staff direction. So just want to make sure that everyone understands that.
Yeah, and then to Mike's point, I think there have been a couple of other times where we've just taken a consensus and said, you know, yeah, as a consensus, this is where we're going.
That's where I was.
But I guess I was thinking more on the line that there's so much involved in this one that we might as well just vote on those parts. That way, we can assume that we'll approve the entire ordinance in the otherwise event that somebody changes their mind at the last minute. Which can happen.
Before we get to that, I had a question to Rachel and to Adam concerning, is it possible to sectionalize a portion, say, of the DDA that would not have provisioning centers but allow the rest of the DDA to have it? And I think that was more of a question, Bill, that you might answer, or?
Or Adam.
Or Adam. I'm not quite sure exactly in that situation.
And my response, and to make it known, is once you, right now, we're using zoning delineations and zoning districts for each different area of the city that we're discussing. To split out a zoning district even further, so for instance, to choose part of the central business district to allow a provisioning center or part not to, it becomes legally problematic, in my opinion. But I would certainly defer to Bill in that particular instance.
Yeah, it becomes much more difficult to do that, because then we would be, in a sense, saying that certain people, or certain sections of the DDA could have it while other sections couldn't, and it might create, it might create one of the other properties in the DDA essentially suing us for saying, how do you let it next door, but you don't let it here? Versus the whole district being exempt. So I would not suggest that that be done. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it probably creates more issues than it solves.
To that end, there was some question regarding, could a requirement be that, for instance, the provisioning center might, you know, could be allowed somewhere if they occupy the full footprint of the lower level of the building, or something like that? I still think that's problematic, going that specific, because obviously, you are at that point talking about specific structures or buildings. So that would be my advice against that.
Okay, so as far as the zoning goes, we've kind of talked about it at great length. I've been spent part of my last week with a few business owners downtown that had emailed and reached out with their, with their concerns. So I don't know if anybody has changed their, changed their mind. We've kind of taken a consensus before about the DDA. Everybody kind of understands where everybody's at.
Talking with businesses has kind of reinforced my consideration of not in the DDA.
Right. And I'd have to say that my conversations with several business owners made me question my, you know, I was never like, wow, gotta have it in DDA, but I was, but I was okay with it. But just after some of my conversations this week, I'm not really, everybody seemed to be kind of echoing Cindy in your statements as far as waiting to see rather than putting it down there.
That's exactly what-
And some of them had actually voted at the time for it, as far as the DDA vote went, but just aren't feeling that comfortable with it now, so. I'm certainly not going to sit here and argue for it. I don't think I'm going to, I think it would fall on deaf ears anyhow, so.
From both sides, people that might allow it and other business owners that wouldn't and talk to them about some of their concerns. I can see both sides of it, but it always could be added later, too, so.
I think, and I don't, I don't mean to speak for either Cindy or for Coulson, Mitchell, but I believe that was all of our states. Well, none of us were opposed forever, but, you know, this is the feedback that we're getting, and I have to reiterate that over the last several weeks, it has been the exact same that I've gotten over the last 14 months. You know, and I think council would concur that I was the one that originally was opposed to any medical water facilities, but after researching, talking to a ton of people, I've changed that vote, but, you know, I'm getting the same feedback that, you know, yes, medical marijuana facility, but not in the DDA district, so I'm comfortable with the way that we have this ending right now here, so.
All right.
That wasn't a motion, that's not-
Support.
Do you want an individual motion on those parts, and Mr. Mayor and Mr. Viper on the same zone?
Of each of the labels?
The first one is-
We'll vote on zoning, we'll vote on buffers, we'll vote on the number.
Do you want to have a vote and then move on to the next category?
Yes, I think that'd be best.
All right, then I move that we allow provisioning centers as presented in I-2, I-1, B-3, B-2, OS-1, and CCD.
Support.
I'll have to go back and listen to that one.
You can give it the papers, which you can do.
It's pretty much what was, what's on here, right?
You can just take this. Okay.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noack?
Yes.
Walagora?
Aye.
Hess?
Here.
And Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on, we'll move on to buffers.
All right, just kind of recap where we kind of left off. We did not talk regarding places of worship at our last workshop, and that was because we had, we were awaiting some survey results, individual results, where I believe we emailed you in your packet, and we can talk about the responses we got. We also received a letter regarding, I know I'm going to call it the wrong thing, but...
It's the Alpena Ministerial Association.
Thank you, I appreciate that, regarding their opinions. So Planning Commission, just for reference, had recommended a 250-foot buffer surrounding places of worship. We had talked about, and looked at various sizes and that type of thing, what it would look like larger. So we can start there, and then I think the parks, I think, were fairly close, and the buffer between provisioning centers. So I'll let you guys take away places of worship.
Okay. We all saw the survey. I think there was only one out of the seven that, that didn't feel a necessity for a buffer, and their comments were pretty much what I, what we kind of discussed already as far as having families, children, addiction meetings and things of that nature. I don't know. Is anybody opposed to buffering places of worship? I'm not at this point. I'm not, I'm not opposed to-
I'm not opposed to them. I think our thing was the amount of buffering.
The distance?
The distance. And, and we don't want, the only place that really came close that I saw was on Ripley, across from the Ripley Street Station, and you had that, what was that building? Some sort of garage. I wasn't here-
Oh, the Western Auto.
Western Auto. So the 250 puts you in its way, but 100 seemed to leave us where it could be utilized for that. And, you know, I'm willing to compromise on a few things, and I think at a max, at a minimum, 100 foot, now, whatever the council comes up with otherwise for buffer. I don't think we can go individual churches, though.
No, I mean, it'll be one for all.
So that's the only compromise that I can see, too, with the 250, you know?
Right.
Same burner, too, like that, though. Places directly across the state would be, would not be able to with 100 foot. I mean, so just, I think, if we're keeping it at 100 and not making it larger, because it really does eliminate, even look at the circle around it, property, property line, so. We discussed last time, maybe going to be 100 might be the most reasonable, just to allow. The churches beg to differ with us.
We wasn't going to get 1,000, that's just, that's way too big there. 1,300, that was way too big. But you're also recognizing their desires to have some form of a buffer to that such. But it's not, I don't think that we're in the mood of totally killing a business, it's just being realistic about certain things.
Yeah. But what they, what they don't want, the premise would be that they don't want it across, like, right across the street. Like, you walk out the church doors, and there it is, right across the street. So, so the buffer would have to be enough that that wouldn't happen, because if we make it so small that somebody can move in across the street, then we might as well not buffer at all, because then we-
Well, 250 kind of messed with the state street area.
Well, I mean-
Or are we going to specify some of the parks there a certain size?
Oh, well, we'll get into parks, I guess.
Yeah, parks and churches, like, we have talked-
Well, that wouldn't be the same numbers, is what I'm saying.
We can make them separate distances.
Yeah, we can make them separate.
Yeah. So places of worship would be one distance, schools are obviously 1,000, parks would be-
Now, that buffer zone, if it encompasses the parking lot but not the building in which they-
Property line to property line, yeah.
But is that property line, because those, some of those places, they may be leasing from another company. So is it-
And that is something, Bill, that I would have to work on. I have it written now, just for ease of legal clarification, it is property to property line. So if any portion of a quarter of that property of the parking lot falls into a buffer, the whole property is out, and that's for the owner of record, not for the, any subsidies they may have. Obviously, Bill can tell me I'm wrong or explain to me what we need to do, and I'm certainly, my mind, I'm open-minded, because I do know that there are some very large properties that are, I'd love to divide it up into strip malls and things like that. So, but right now, the way I've thought, you know, in my mind, the easiest, cleanest is to say, any portion of that strip mall is within a buffer zone, the whole thing's out. So obviously, I'm looking for the clarification, but that's kind of, in my head, where I was going with that.
So do we want to go up?
I'm comfortable with 250. I mean, I've got some number that's been up there for a while, and they're asking for it and such, so I'm comfortable with that. I agree with the mayor's comment, if you go down to 100, you know, you may not, you might as well not buffer at all, and they're asking us to. I just, that's where I'm at.
I'm fairly easy on that portion there, right? I'm fairly easy on that portion there, right there.
The 250 is good. I'm fine with 250. I would never go 1,000 or 1,300 like they suggested, but I'm fine with 250.
Are there any other, like, areas where that's gonna be an issue, other than...
A little bit to, you know, the council has said we might be that way, I guess, so...
There's several churches along Ripley, so I was gonna pretty much cut out all of Ripley, probably realistically, because there's several churches all the way down, and there's different commercial buildings.
That's right, there's pretty much one every block.
The only strip along Ripley that would be probably available would be north of Ella White. Along there, there is, that's fairly...
Once you have Ella White, it's clear up to the corner of Washington. Okay.
Once you clear 1,000 feet.
Right, once you clear 1,000.
It's a long way.
Right, right, yeah.
What Amber said is what you're gonna do is you're gonna cut out pretty much Ripley Street, except for the four corners.
Do you have your maps today?
I do.
A ski.
Also, back North Second Avenue, probably quite a bit. I don't know that it's closest to Mission Residential there, but that, the school, well, there's the school going anyway, so... So, I guess that's already gonna affect that, so...
Okay, so, turn in 250. Eventually, you'll be able to see that. We can turn on the aerial if you want to do as well, but... So, that's the difference there. The yellow is what the buffers are looking at.
The yellows.
Yeah, and anything in red is a zone that is capable of having...
And those yellows are buffering what right now?
It's buffering churches.
How big is it?
250.
Oh, 250? I'm sorry. And we're looking at, so the blue is what's left from the 1,000 feet from the Ella White?
Correct.
Okay.
This way, I'll clarify those for everyone.
What's the red street going horizontal?
The red street going horizontal?
Yeah.
Grant?
Grant?
Grant, is it?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. We won't have to limit the number anymore.
Can you zoom out so we can also see?
Yeah.
By the time you get any buffer between provisioning centers, you're only gonna have, like, two buildings left in the city.
So, you can see kind of the little yellow circles is where the churches are? The red, again, is zoning districts that are within the zones that we discussed them.
Okay.
Go anywhere you want me to.
Zoom in.
So, red is where they can be?
Correct. I mean, there are obviously areas that are large industrial that may not make feasible sense, but...
Right.
So, it looks like from Ripley up Washington, you can go a couple blocks up Ripley towards Ella White.
Yeah, so you've got a few blocks before you hit the school.
Right around down those there.
Yeah.
So, it's just a lower section. We're kind of out of there at the 250.
Yeah, and then down towards the bottom. Yes, ma'am?
Where does that put All Saints School?
Right up there.
All Saints School is that big blue, is the big blue area, right where the cursor is. So, that's a church is the yellow part, and then the blue part is 1,000 feet from the school itself.
Okay, so that would take you, because I know a lot of the school kids walk from the school to City Hall to the State Theater in the summertime and in the springtime and the fall for things. So, I just want to make sure there's nothing in that where they have to walk by.
Well, what I can tell you is that we, I can't speak for council, but we can't buffer everywhere we would expect children to walk or to go, but if you look, if you do, if you look at it, there's that blue circle goes all the way across the river, and then there's, we're not allowing it in the DDA. So, they would be able to go across the river and into the entire downtown, library, City Hall, everything that's in the central business district, so they won't be allowed basically anywhere near where you're saying.
Okay, okay.
Then, Adam, St. Mary's is in the DDA. That's the edge of the DDA, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe it is. That being said, I did show all the churches just in case, because I don't know what...
Yeah.
See if you just do blue or...
They're kind of covered both ways.
Yeah.
Yeah, 1,000 feet is really huge when it comes all the way across the river.
You're gonna use church, place of worship.
And then the blue area above All Saints, that's the Boys and Girls Club?
That's Lincoln School.
Actually, no, I didn't show the Boys and Girls Club.
Lincoln.
Oh, that's Lincoln School?
Didn't get that one in.
Okay, that's, I forgot about Lincoln School, okay. And then that's all residential, so there's not much concern there, and I don't think DPI is selling their property. So, that's the red part where that is. But again, back down, talking about Ripley, that's really...
A fair amount up to Washington and on the other side.
Can we look at 200? What does 200 do?
There's 200. Now, they're blue, this particular... Might look green.
Adam, just to take into account the intention of location of the Boys and Girls Club?
I don't have that shown on the map, but council has indicated we want to buffer that somewhere.
That was on Third, right, where the old Shoreline Church was?
Then, Boys and Girls go into East Campus, which is on the other side of the river?
Yeah, that's the plan.
But there's the addiction centers right there anyway, but we also, where that building is, that's walk.
Okay. Oh, so that old school kind of thing there. I got you. That's a fair amount of, is that Chisholm?
Uh, yes, that's Chisholm all through here.
Yeah, that's a fair amount of Chisholm that's available.
Well, now you have churches off altogether, though, right?
Oh, he has churches off.
Let me share that. Sorry.
I was gonna say, wow.
Something is off, though. There you go.
That's still not too bad. Problem is, is that, was that Methodist Church across from the Dollar Tree? It's still in your parking lot, isn't it?
It's my opinion, so even at 200, it still eliminates some properties, no matter what. So, I would stay at 250, because you don't gain anything by going to...
It's not gonna change anything.
Yeah, because anyway, if you're gonna go property line to property line, you're really looking at one block on Ripley.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not making, 50, 50 feet isn't gonna make that much of a difference. Yeah, really not leaving a whole lot of space here.
I don't think there's any reason to change for 250 on that, but it's not one.
Well, even 100 doesn't really make any difference, because Ripley Street's more than 100 feet wide, or less than 100 feet wide, right?
I'm not an expert on that one.
Ripley's 100 feet wide at that point.
It is 100 feet wide.
That's 100, right there.
That's right on the edge, isn't it?
Yeah, and then, like I said, you might as well not even have a buffer.
No, just leave it at 250 then, like it was recommended.
All right, so to take a clarification, I'm assuming we're gonna do the one motion for the whole, all the buffers?
I think we could probably get to that point.
Are we gonna move on to parks for now, or? What we discussed previously is put a 250-foot buffer around parks with children's play equipment. With the exception of Mishkiwess and Starlight, with the verbiage that provisioning centers cannot be directly adjacent to those parks, so they're across the street, that would not be considered directly adjacent.
I for one am fine with that.
I'm comfortable with that, too. There's a lot of green space, you know, between what the areas are before you back up the street, so...
Yeah.
And to that end, there was a question. Plaid of Commission had recommended 500 feet between provisioning centers. I think we had a conversation that that was not, I think most councilmen responded not necessary. So, right now, I have provision on there. Is no buffers between provisioning centers?
I don't think we have room for buffers. I say don't at this point. I'm comfortable with no buffer between them.
Can I just ask you a question now? Is, in the future, let's say that we adjust things, can we put buffers back in?
You can, however, if they locate right across from each other, we wouldn't be able to affect them. But anything moving forward in the future, if you've decided to expand, go unlimited, whatever your preference, you would be able to install buffers at that point.
Okay.
That was 200? That was 200, you said?
No buffer.
It's recommended 250.
Oh, so between the two is no buffer?
I'm taking back, it was 500, oh, right.
It was 500 recommended, and we were talking in the last meeting about no buffer between provisioning centers. I think the market would drive that.
And obviously, that becomes probably more important, or maybe if the provision centers are allowed with two, certainly, I guess you're at, might not be an issue.
I'm good with that.
I'm careful with that.
Mr. Mayor, come to that.
If we put a buffer between provisioning centers, who would be in favor of striking the limit based on the amount of space we have left for them to even exist? Because I'm still of the opinion that we don't limit them, that we let the free market determine how many our community can withstand, and that drives, that drives competition, it drives lower costs, it drives pretty much everything.
I'm still of the mindset of limiting it to two for future visitation if things go well to expand upon it. I just don't look for a total wide open, because if things go to hell in a handbasket, you can't bring it back. That's my main concern. If you start off, you could always increase, but if you totally wide open, you can't increase, at least to the ones that are there. That's my main concern.
My concern with letting it to two is that you're not really allowing the opportunity for the best-case scenario to develop, because the lottery system, you have no idea who you'll get, how they'll do with it, whether it doesn't... There's gonna be all different types of operators and business owners, but it doesn't allow for the best businesses to develop in the community. It could just be not very good. Well, our businesses, and that's what we're stuck with, as long as they don't close forever, because we have two places. Sign always doesn't, doesn't have concern, and also, there's those concerns of all the lottery system, and if there's lawsuits, there's a lot of that, which has been happening around the States, and some thoughts I have on that. I still want to limit on them. And as far as the business, if they're bad businesses, that just like anything else, they just won't. People won't go to them. They'll go outside the area to get what they need. They'll close, and then somebody else can come in and do it. I still want to limit. That's me.
That's kind of where I'm at, too. For now, two is where I'm at, to start with, maximum. And then figure out how we're gonna select on the next, but yeah. I'm still hesitant to, so I don't think we need the buffer between, but I think you need to start, it's not a bad idea.
So, you don't need a buffer? If we only have two, they'd be right next to each other? That's fine? I'm just asking.
Yep, no.
That's fine, man.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, because, you know, a lot of times, the market won't drive where they don't want to be, or they're in a market where they want to be, so, you know. I don't believe, from what I understand of that industry, it's not, they look for areas away from each other.
So, as it's written on here, no buffer between would be good, or what we've agreed on as a whole. Parks 250 with the exception of the Mishkiwess and Starlight.
And not buffering parks with children's equipment.
And these are, yeah, parks with children's play equipment, still agreed, fine. Places of worship, are we at 250?
250.
Did you discuss a no opt-out, or?
Yeah, I don't, judging by the responses from the places of worship, I don't... We won't do that. It's just as written. We can always change it.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Later.
And on the buffers, we have to add the Boys and Girls Club and the Addiction Center.
Make sure we get that, and I'm assuming we're buffering that at 250.
I would say, yeah.
Captain, I'll treat that.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, because that'll put you in the residential area.
And then also with buffers, we did talk about other ones like daycares, addiction centers, that's still at 250.
Yeah, and is that, can you go back up to that, where you had Sunrise Center, that was still called?
Are daycares, that's all included? Is that, because residential daycare is like, there's the one on Washington, and that's gonna include all the way up to Domino's, I was gonna say, I'm just wondering, like, that street back there. Maybe that street's not on anyway.
I would think home, daycare could come and go, and that'd be kind of difficult to...
Yeah.
Not a home daycare, it's a registered facility, which we have none in the city that I'm in.
Well, they're registered and licensed in their homes, but some of them are still on bordering businesses.
Commercial facility up just on the other side of town over there, at the edge of Camera Road, that is, I can show you. But there's already churches right next to it, anyway.
Okay, so there's only one right now?
There aren't any.
Okay. Can I just throw this out, too, because, and the only reason I'm gonna ask this is because he did answer the survey, is the homeless shelter, Sunrise?
We're set.
We probably should specify, if you want it, including... We probably should specify if you want it included in there, I don't have it on the map. I didn't really consider that a church, but certainly I know they do have an AA and that kind of thing.
Because he did, he did specify.
Well, wait, before you go to that, I had you go there, just because I wanted to, I wanted to take a quick look at here. So, so that's around, so those yellow spots, those are 250?
Those are, yeah, those are addiction facilities.
Right, the addiction facility, and then if, if and when, I'm assuming that the Boys and Girls Club are continuing with their east campus, that's kind of southeast, right, right in there?
Yeah, I mean, right here, so obviously that would cross over into the next block we got here.
Okay, but, but 250, it's not gonna go up any further north than those yellow spots are now?
I don't know, they would not.
Okay, that, that's fine. And then you were gonna go to the, what?
Sunrise.
Sunrise Mission.
Sunrise Mission, I, I don't know.
Do they do AA and A there?
They do, they do a lot there.
So, if my memory serves me.
I'll find Dairy Queen first.
There's Dairy Queen, I think.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's right through here. Obviously, that would take, if you include it, since they got a small chunk of Chatham. That would probably preclude the Dairy Queen building, the, the liquor store, they divided the restaurant there. There's also some office buildings across the street.
I have a concern about taking requests to be buffered, though, from any organization. I mean, I appreciate what they do, but I have a concern about saying, well, I want a buffer, and we'll allow that, then we're pressing a precedent.
That's kind of, I was, it's kind of different business, calling that, yeah, we're taking requests.
I just wanted to throw that, though, because I didn't want to not have that conversation.
Did that include daycare facilities? Registered? Well, not in home ones, I guess, mostly like commercial.
I don't know, it's, it's what they do at the homeless shelter, are any different than what they do at the Sunrise Center? Sunrise Mission, Sunrise Center? I'm just throwing that out there, I mean, they don't. I don't know, I guess it's different.
The prior purpose is a homeless shelter, which is, like I said, grateful they're in our community, and, but, others.
Everybody that's in the homeless shelter isn't necessarily addicted to anything, they're just homeless for other reasons.
Right.
I mean, I didn't mean to classify them, I was just kind of clarifying. That's fine, I'm fine with that. Are we required by the state of Michigan to buffer, I mean, we've been talking about the licensed childcare, no? We're not?
I don't know, there's no.
Licenseed childcare.
Most of them happen to be in the residential areas, out and out of a home, so it doesn't really not an issue that we're discussing so much, but the commercial ones, we have to show them to, from the center.
Can I just ask one more question? The college is a school, is that included?
I included the developed portions of the college. With medical, you can get, you know, a card at any age, as long as you're, if you're, you're taking parental consent. But I did include the developed areas, they do own a lot of property to the north. I did not include that, because at that point you've got a third city, and the colleges, so I wanted to do areas where they function and operate. And that certainly, I'm not sure if that was protected by the federal law, I would think it would be, but I could be very wrong. You know, another question is, you know, does Uptina Public Schools have any partnerships with the college where their kids may be going over to the college?
Do enrollment or something.
So, that is why I included them initially, and I do have a buffer around them.
The childcare and development center that's back in, tucked back in where the
Long Rapids Plaza.
That was, I, I did include that, or use my mind, I was including that, I think it's on the map.
Oh, is it, okay.
I can go to it, but, and there is two churches back there, the Line of Base and Jehovah Witnesses, are in that same area. I don't think I'm showing everything here, because it's black on the map.
It's all that blue, Long Rapids.
Yeah, the daycare is, I believe, back here? No, I'm not, I'm not showing it right now, but it is something that we've included.
What's that blue area for? Is that a school? Is that a school? Is that where it's blue? Is there a school back there, is that where that's?
Hes's Academy, right?
Yeah, that's the Hes's Academy, right there.
Oh, yeah.
So that wouldn't matter, anyway.
So it wouldn't matter?
Yeah, pick it up anyway.
Okay. All right, so we're good with everything that's on here, but with the addition of the Boys and Girls Club?
Yes.
250 feet around Boys and Girls Club.
So with the exception of some parks, Mishkiwis and Starlight, 250 is what we're talking about, everything on this buffer.
This is everything that we said.
As percentage, it's pretty much as it's written on here.
The Boys and Girls Club and the Addiction Center, commercial daycare. Other than that, that's pretty much what it says. We have to add Boys and Girls Club, the Addiction Center, and all commercial daycare. And I move that we approve those buffers.
You talked about the location of the current Boys and Girls Club and the anticipated one? Or just the anticipated one?
We didn't talk about that, did we?
Because they may not be moving anytime soon, necessarily.
whichever location is operating. I mean, as a Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, and maybe that's how we, maybe that's how we reference it.
If someone was quick enough and they decided to, say, by the bank across the street from them, that is probably an area that could be conceivable, I don't see that happening.
JNS Auto or something.
So they could try and sneak in before they, or jump in, not sneak in, poor terminology, by that building before, they move over officially, but I feel like that's probably the fault.
Those locations may be within 250 feet of the park, anyway, they'll escape parkers, has, that's, that whole riverfront park is gonna be play area, isn't it? Wasn't that one of the ones we're including?
Does that include the bank?
I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm not, it may already be.
You have a school there, obviously there's a small portion up here that could be, I don't know.
The riverfront park there, right there, that's gonna be.
That is a park on that, so that would be one that we would offer.
Yeah, that's one we talked about, because it's gonna be a lot of place, so, once, well, it already is, but once it's developed even more, so.
Yeah, they definitely have, oh, yeah, there it is. Now the park buffer's on.
Okay, so, we're still. I guess we're just gonna do both locations and just drop off the other one once they move.
Right.
Longer on present, on site.
Yeah, just so there's some kind of goofy loophole thing, just buffer both of them.
Okay.
And we can always drop the one on River, once they move out. So you made your motion?
So I made my motion, and we're gonna buffer both locations of the Boys and Girls Club.
I'm out of hand, okay.
With 250.
Boys and Girls Club in Uptina, right?
Uptina is no buffer.
Okay.
Okay, Noak?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, number of provisioning centers?
I move that we have no more than two provisioning centers.
Second.
Whoops.
Sorry, man.
Discussion?
Any discussion on that?
Walagora?
No.
Hess?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
And Noak?
Yes.
Motion carried.
If it's okay with you guys, why don't we wrap it up at seven o'clock? And we'll, we'll discuss the selection process at our next meeting. By then, I, I, honestly, I still have some stuff to read over that was given to me not too long ago. We got an email from somebody not too long ago that hasn't discussed that same thing. So let's kind of bring back our perspective of that.
If anybody has anything else that they think we should read, does please send it.
I will forward anything I get from anybody to council and to the managers.
I haven't seen anything in the selection process, writing, I'd have to research or Google it more, like, to see what I can find, such. The only thing I found was a double blind system.
I move we adjourn to closed session, discuss water sewer litigation.
Pardon, pardon, Mayor, did you make your statement during public comment that if it was about this, you would wait until?
Yes, yes, okay. I had just been taken hands, I'm sorry. Please come. No, no, no. Sorry, yeah, didn't mean to leave you out.
No, no, that's fine. Jerry Griffin, here on behalf of Pink County, we are a Michigan owner, Michigan-based, company headquartered in Farmington Hills, and if you ever go down 75, if you look at the west side of the highway at Pink County Road, exit 181, we are that massive group facility right there. I did, I did send a letter to each member of councils, and by the way, welcome to the new members. I was here back in December, so I know there's a few, few new members and a new city manager, congratulations. Where I talked about a couple of the items that had come up at the meeting that I'd missed in January, particularly as it comes to the selection process. Now that you've limited it to two, you're going to have to determine some measure of if you're going to do that. And I would really strongly urge you not to use a lottery. In fact, I, I wanna, I could be wrong, but it seemed like over the summer, first meeting you guys had at this, and I attended, you were saying, we don't want to go in that direction, maybe, maybe that's changed a little bit. But here's the problem with that, particularly in light of putting your cap in place. Suppose at some point in time, and I know talking in these meetings in the past, it has been acknowledged that perhaps you're going to get to recreational at some point. State law requires that to be a merit-based system, and you will have more applications than you have sites, which would be two, when that comes along. So you're gonna have to invent a system then, and then you're very likely gonna end up having to extend your cap beyond two, because you might have scores that come in higher than the two you have in town. Secondly, if you automatically say that you want to just grant them to those two, you haven't given it to them through a merit system. They were just fortunate enough to have their ping pong ball come up through the, or their name drawn out of the hat, or however you guys decide to do it. And lastly, if you have, I'm just gonna grab a number 15 applications to come in. Say the first two are, like, you know, you didn't put in a buffer, but if, if you don't limit, say, any parcel to having only one application at that parcel, you might have two applicants at the same location. So if you're going to do a lottery, I would urge you to put in the provisions that you can only have one application per property. I would also recommend very highly that you only allow a business to apply once. We've been in several lotteries, and in one community, south of here, south of Clare, and north of Lansing, they have 59 entries, 35 of them were three companies. Alls they did was flood the lottery, they went around town and gave people a thousand bucks, saying, can we apply at your location? We're not gonna locate here. Alls we're gonna do is, if we're drawn at your spot, we're gonna go to the city and say, we want to transfer to over to this spot, that we've already got secured, that's where we want to locate. If the idea is this to be fair and transparent and competitive, then you have to limit it to one business, and require them to be pre-qualified, which I think is probably almost standard. And everybody even has come to that conclusion by now. So, you know, that's what I would hope that you would consider on doing, if, you know, if you're gonna do a lottery. Again, if you at some point in time move to allow recreational facilities, you're gonna have to redo the process because of the law. So I would hope that you would think long and hard about the selection process, there's a number of communities that use different systems. Very frankly, some of them just said, we're gonna look at these, and we're gonna pick the best ones. And if you want to apply, you're gonna acknowledge in the application that you're okay with that, and you've given away your legal right to challenge it. There are some communities that have done that, I can't believe it's not used more often, but I think it's the best one out there. It puts you on offense, instead of letting us be on offense. So, anyway, thanks for the time, and I look forward to working with you further as we go along.
I have a question for you, a couple of them. That was your email I just read the other day.
I just sent one last week.
Okay, so, so I have your contact information. But when you said that, to, to, one of your statements was to, was to have only one applicant per property?
Yes.
So if I'm, so if I, if I apply and I'm gonna, and I write my property down as 351 Ripley, which I'm assuming is a real place, for argument's sake.
You would know better than I would, yes.
So no one else can apply with that address on it, but that doesn't lock you into that spot. If, if in the event you win, you might move to another spot before you actually open.
Well, what it tries to avoid is a system, or a situation where, again, if you do a lottery, if the first two are drawn out of there, and they're both happen to be at the same address.
Right.
You've got that problem. Secondly, it, it does help make the process a little more fair and competitive, where you have, you know, if that truly is what the goal, and that's what most people cite when they, they talk about a lottery, is, is you get as wide a swath of properties or applicants you can have, but you don't have people doubling up on properties. And that kind of delves down into the other issue, which was only allowing a company to apply once. I really, you know, I know you guys have gone around and around, in terms of coming to the, to the solution on this. It's been many months. I drove up, the first time I drove up here, I had my top down. It just, it just seems counterintuitive, that you go through all of that to get to the finish line and put a blindfold on the reaching of that. That just, to me, if you, if you're gonna be very diligent about how this process works, I think you should really review each application, to determine, make sure you meet the criteria of what you want. Plus, again, it puts you in, you're on the offensive, instead of, instead of us saying, well, you screwed up how you did this, we're taking it at court. You basically say to everybody, this is how it's gonna be done, if you want to apply, you acknowledge that, tough luck. You're on that, so.
Any other questions?
Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, motion or thought?
Okay, I move we, I rescind it, so we can take the comments, so I would make it again, I adjourn, I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss water sewer litigation.
Hess?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Noak? And Walagora?
Yes, ma'am.